To remind them that we're recording and that'll give me time to just grab the official.
All right. Thank you for joining us for Gen Chem Study Session Number Three with Dr. Taylor. Uh, Dr. Taylor, will you take it from here?
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, so as you might be noticing, I am grabbing the official. Uh, what do things uh cover from the seven oh one section? Um, don't I already know this? Yes, technically I do, but the lovely thing is, is Dr. Deekman has already gone through and done the uh which section is everything out of. Um, so um, we'll just talk briefly about what everything's going to cover. So first of all, we are going all the way back to chapter seventeen, which was acids and bases. And that means that is the stuff before spring break. And here's something you probably might not have thought of. I know frankly, I didn't. Um, we didn't actually ask you anything that had to do with ice tables and acids and bases on the last exam. So that's one of the things that we do get to ask you about on this exam. So we could do just a straight here, what is the pH of a weak acid or what is the pH of a weak base? Without any additional flair uh to that, because that was actually something that we haven't done yet. Um, we also covered in there things like the pHs of salts. Uh, so a brief reminder of what I mean when I say a salt, that might be something like ammonium chloride. Uh, where that really does have that ammonium ion in there, that lovely NH four plus. So you've got to think about what are those actual components in there and then thinking it through. That notion that that ammonium ion, gosh, looks a lot like the conjugate acid of ammonia because it is. And so this is actually an acidic salt. Um, so things like that. Uh, Lewis acids and bases are also in there, and that's one of the notes I have to myself to try to do an example of Lewis acids and bases. Um, and then chapter eighteen, uh, this is the one we've been focusing on more, especially more recently. Um, this is the one that has buffers and titrations and solubility rules all in it. Um, so that's the joy of chapter eighteen. And then chapter fifteen, the main thing about this really is going to be entropy. Um, so some of you are more familiar with different pieces of that, but this is mostly going to be entropy, um, which includes calculations. Uh, and we can do an example of an entropy calculation. Yeah. So I do have a list of things to talk about. I'm definitely also welcome and open to uh, things out of the chat. Um, I'm trying to think. Yeah, um, al- also, also my apologies, uh, if I seem a little bit out of it today. Today has especially seemed to be the day where I don't quite have enough time to finish anything I've begun. Um, so I'm trying to get myself a bit focused because um, almost everything that I have started today has been left unfinished, which doesn't feel good, but that's my problem, not your problem. Um, so what on here is not just titrations, because most of what I wound up with uh, were questions about titrations from what I asked my class. Um. Actually, let me go ahead and start with Lewis acids and bases. It might make some people a little uncomfortable, but we're going to go ahead and start with Lewis acids and bases because that is one of the few things that is a kind of a singular topic. Um, so first of all, with Lewis acids and bases, um, one of the things about these is this is a different definition than what we've been dealing with. So first of all, if you can think about something as a Bronsted acid. Uh, so Bronsted acids are the ones that we really, whenever we say an acid, we've been meaning Bronsted acids for this entire time unless we specifically say Lewis acid. So if you don't see the word Lewis, then this is the tough definition we've been dealing with. Bronsted acids are ones that donate H plus. Um, and so therefore are going to affect pH. And so Bronsted acids are one category. When we then bring in the Lewis acid definition, this is a different definition. It's a broader definition that's going to include things that the Bronsted definition did not include. So the Lewis acid definition is something that accepts electrons, and we'll do an example in a moment. But my point is, is that Lewis acids actually include all Bronsted acids. So if there is a reaction and you can identify something as a Bronsted acid, congratulations, that's definitely also a Lewis acid automatically. This is actually similar to if we were saying that somebody lives, you're going to watch my really terrible drawing in a minute. Uh, if somebody lives in Dallas, then you would actually automatically know that they also live in Texas. Here's my drawing of Texas. Oh no, this is worse than usual. Um. Anyway, it's fine. That's supposed to be Texas. Just pretend it's labeled. Um, though if you can't tell, oh gosh, that's not where Dallas is at all. Um, pardon me, I will at least move this over. Our Microsoft team, so don't let me. Awesome. Great. Now I can move it. Um, so if you did know that somebody lived in Dallas, that would automatically meant mean that they live in Texas by default. If you know that something is a Bronsted acid, it is automatically a Lewis acid by default. So this is part of just dealing with them, uh, is if you can recognize them by one thing, you automatically know the other. This does mean that the same thing's going to be true about Bronsted bases. So Bronsted bases are ones then that accept a proton. And just like when we were talking then about Lewis bases, Lewis bases are going to include the Bronsted definition, but they're going to be a bit broader. So a Lewis base is one then that donates electrons. And again, everything that is a Lewis base is automatically a Bronsted base. If you're in Texas, then automatically, um, so if you're talking, thinking about being in Dallas, you're automatically in Texas. Uh, so if you're a Bronsted base, it's automatically a Lewis space. Ah, yes, yes, it's Bronsted basis automatically a Lewis space. You can also tell by me trying to make certain that I am stating this correctly is part of why I personally like to draw the circles, um, to make sure that I am emphasizing this correctly. Because writing down on paper helps me make certain that I'm doing the concept correctly. Also, this is a good time to, um, keep in mind that this is also a good time to practice the language. Uh, so if I am struggling to make certain that I say it correctly, then it might be a good thing for you to, um, mention and and talk to each other about to make sure that you can do the language correctly. My one note already messing up is not making me feel good. So we're going to do our best. So for an example, um, I am actually just going to grab an example out of the notes. Um, my apologies, I was hoping I was going to have a little bit more time, uh, but back to that idea of, uh, trying, trying to get through perhaps one too many things. Um, it's just kind of been my day. Uh, so I'm going to grab all Lewis acids and bases thing off of my notes. Maybe, there we go. Uh, oh, one of the ones from Alex. Um. Go ahead and grab the nickel one. Um. So one of the ones, uh, from Alex that I'm picking, he uses nickel as a solid plus carbon monoxide. Uh, I assume that's as a gas. Yep. Uh, to make this one single compound. So one way that oftentimes, um, liquid apparently, that Lewis acids and bases are a little bit different is something that you might notice here is we go from two individual species to one. This is often a hallmark of when we're going to bring in that Lewis definition. Uh, because Bronsted doesn't really fit here. Uh, and one of the odd things here as well is there's no charges. So in some other examples, um, there are other times where if we have something like, uh, NH three plus H plus going to NH four plus, granted, this one also looks a bit more like a Bronsted definition to deal with. I'm going to come back to the one with the nickel cup, with the nickel atom, don't worry. Um, but first, something a little bit more straightforward. What we can see in here is we have this lovely lone pair off of our nitrogen that's going to form a bond with my proton here. So that then when we are looking at the Lewis structure of the finished product, we can tell that we have that this bond being formed. Now, a few things, so my NH three granted is a weak base by our Bronsted definition. It is still a Lewis base. The other thing that's really lovely, uh, is my proton definitely acts as a Lewis acid. The lovely thing here is that since a Lewis acid has to accept electrons, this proton doesn't have any electrons. So it can only accept electrons. It's the only thing that it can do. Um, another thing in its favor here is it's positive. Positive species are more likely to accept electrons because they're positive. Uh, they're going to be more likely to have those negative electrons be attracted to them. Um, similarly, this particular Lewis base is neutral. Um, but if this was negative, it would be again more likely to be a Lewis space because species that are negative more than have extra electrons that they can donate. Let me write my positive thing over here so I can keep everything balanced to make me happy. Um. So this is just an example to kind of keep in mind that those similarities between Bronsted and Lewis can exist, but we're just taking a look now at electrons. So when we take a look at this notion of dealing with a metal, one of the other things you might recall is even when we're talking about Bronsted's, and it's a little strange, but metals can coordinate water and affect their pH. So there are a lot of metals. Um, it's basically everything except group one and group two metals, except for beryllium. Beryllium does also act as an acid, but all of those metals, neutral or positive can act as acids. Um, so, uh, nickel here is going to act as a Lewis acid. Uh, this is something honestly that is helpful if we look at a periodic table. Do I have one of those up here today? I'm going to have to go looking for one. Oh, we're going to need the new, I really hope there was periodic table over here. There isn't. Great. Well, back over here. Um. So my nickel here is going to act as a Lewis acid. It is, when you take a look at a periodic table, um, it is hanging out in my transition metal locations. Metals in general are going to act as Lewis acids unless for some reason they are negative. Uh, mostly because metals have an ability, um, to accept electrons and coordinate extra electrons. This carbon monoxide here, it might have been a while since you've seen it, uh, but it does in fact have these beautiful lone pairs on the outside of it. Um, so in this way, it's got those electron pairs to be donating. So this carbon monoxide is going to act as a Lewis base. Um, so a couple of other things that can make a Lewis acid versus Lewis space a little bit more straightforward is I would encourage you to look for charges. Because if you do have something, I know in this example, they're both neutral, but if you have something that is positive, that should be your Lewis acid. If you have something that is negative, that's going to be your Lewis base. If you have a metal, that's going to be also in your Lewis acid category. Um, so some of those things will hopefully help you in determining Lewis acids and Lewis bases uh, from one another. Uh, and you might have noticed that we didn't spend a ton of time on on them in class. Uh, for those of you that are like, I don't think we ever did that. I know in my section, we basically did it in the last twenty minutes before we broke for spring break. Um, so I would frankly be really impressed if anybody in my sections remembered that we did them, uh, because of where that was located. Yes. Um, so that is reflected on the exam. Uh, right now, there's one Lewis acid base question on the exam, just one. Because we, it is something that we covered in class, but again, it was not nearly the emphasis that other things. So before I get into titrations, I still do buffers next. Um. Yeah, buffers next and then titrations. Uh, but before I do that, were there any questions out of the chat so far?
Uh, yes, ma'am, we have four.
Great. What are they?
So, uh, may you please go over number one hundred fourteen, letter H on the chapter seventeen end of textbook questions? Also, can you explain the difference between half, the half equivalence and equivalence point? Uh, next one is, what do we need to know to solve acid and base problems? Also, how do we predict the product from a given only reaction? Uh, second part of this is can you explain each type of titration in short and what we need to memorize? Um, next question is where are all the places we need to use ice tables? And then can you please go over how to find the exponents and coefficients used when calculating KSP? And that's all we have right now.
Okay, that is mostly all titration stuff. Cool. Um. So as, as usual, I will not forget end of chapter problems. Um, those are the most likely thing for me to shove off to the, uh, the follow-up video. Uh, but by now y'all are probably used to that, uh, but I will not forget those. Um, everything else is titrations except for a couple of things that are solubility. Okay. Um, so we'll just do titrations and we'll see how far we get. So the first question was, um, trying to do a short version of all of the titrations. So pros and cons, uh, pros and cons. Um, when you say all of the titrations, here's the way they work in my head. Um, and we'll see if this is helpful or not. Um, but essentially in my head to start off with, there are three different beginnings. Really, there's only, hmm, I take it back. There's two beginnings for me. Um, because one of them to me is not actually different. Um, so I think of these two options as strong, strong. Um, by that I mean strong acid, strong base. And since they're both strong, I don't really care, um, which one is in the beaker and which one is in the buret. Um, and my other one is weak, strong. Now, weak, strong then does have two different options out of it. Uh, one where I have a weak acid and a strong base. And the other where I have a weak base and a strong acid. So even though I know that this oftentimes looks like three different ones, to me, I like to categorize both of the weak ones in the same category. Because when I have to think about what do I get out of them and therefore how do I solve them, these two go in the same category. I'll show you what I mean in a minute. So let's start off with the strong, strong one. So no matter what, um, out of all, any of these that I currently have, um, the first thing that you're going to do is react in moles. Every single one of these has some strong species in it. I don't care what it is. Uh, it might be a strong acid and a strong base. It might just be one or the other. That strong species is going to completely control what you do first, which is react in moles. The only thing you get to do with that strong species is see if it goes away or if it sticks around. Uh, and the only way you get to do that is by doing things in moles, not molarity. You have to react things together in a, in a stoichiometric ratio, which means moles. That that's the very first thing you do is you react in moles. So, um, I was going to do the strong, strong. Um, so doing a strong, strong example, um, because I do want to look at that one first. Um, so this would be where you have, um, we make this bigger. Any beaker is a zero point two molar, just to not be zero point one anymore. Um, is up fifty, hmm, I would like more round numbers, please. A hundred and fifty milliliters of a zero point two molar HCl. Yeah, sure, HCl solution. Um, added to this is fifty milliliters of a hmm, one molar solution of KOH, uh, what is the pH? So here's a strong, strong. Um, and what we are going to do is we're going to react this in moles. So even though um, I have molarities, I've got lots of stuff going on, the very first thing I'm going to do is react in moles. Now, for this reaction, I could go ahead and think through the entire reaction. Um, and, but what I'm going to go ahead and do is I'm going to go ahead and look at just the net ionic equation. So in doing so, this is going to do two things for me. One, this is going to let me focus on what species are actually reacting. It's going to let me get rid of the spectator ions. This is also going to go ahead and let me get rid of things that do not affect the pH. So that sodium and that chloride ion do not affect the pH. I am keeping the water in here because otherwise my equation is not balanced and that bothers me. Um, also, this is part of the net ionic equation, uh, is to go ahead and have the water displayed in here. Uh, we are reacting, reactions have to be done in moles. So that is what I'm going to go for. Um, so a hundred and fifty milliliters times point two gets me zero point oh three moles of H plus. And then I have fifty milliliters of point one solution. That's zero point oh five moles of this. My water is a liquid, it just hangs out. Um, the next thing I'm going to do is I'm going to subtract the smaller number. Something should be zero. This is another way, by the way, that you know that we are in mold is something goes to zero. So one of the questions that I was getting was things like, how do you know if you're using an ice table? What's the difference between whatever the heck this thing is called right now and an ice table? Ice tables are always equilibrium tables. At equilibrium, which would be this last row, you don't get zero at equilibrium. One of the whole points of equilibrium is you always have something. Um, you should basically never or almost never have zero at equilibrium. Um, so the thing is, is that this thing is going to give us zero somewhere. So this is not equilibrium. Um, so, but what I do, so then the question is, what do I have left over? So I reacted in moles, I got stuffed. The grand question is, what's my stuff? And this is the part we're paying attention to, keeping everything in nice neat columns is really useful. The stuff I have is hydroxide. So if the question is, what is the pH? Did I even, I did ask what's the pH? Thank goodness. Um, since I wanted to know the pH, pH is always in molarity. So I was talking to my class this morning because, and this just happens over time. Uh, we got really used to, hey, we use these brackets. Um, I think folks may have forgotten because frankly, uh, after the original introduction, I forget to emphasize it. Um, brackets mean molarity. So it's part of their definition. It's part of the way we shorthand science in a common way. Just like the big capital M means molarity, those brackets also mean molarity. So this is not just a, we've been using molarity in our pH equation because it was convenient. Uh-uh, we've been using molarity because it's part of the definition and we have to. There are no other options. If you want to solve for pH, you have to be in molarity. No other options. Need molarity for pH, period, end of story. That's what the brackets mean. Um, that, and that's also part of why we use brackets and we haven't just used parentheses or something else. We've been using those brackets with those nice square looking sides because brackets mean molarity. Since I need molarity then, um, this table is all in moles. Um, so this is moles. I don't need moles anymore. I need molarity. Which means I need volume. Uh, so I've got point oh two moles divided by liters so that I can have molarity. Now I need my liters. I'm going to go back up to my problem. I have a hundred and fifty plus fifty. So my final volume should be in liters, zero point two. I did not mean for this to look, to work out this nicely, but it did. Ah, um. Now, the other thing to pay attention to is what did I actually have left over? And this is, this is one of those questions that is really good to ask yourself. So I said I had point oh two moles, but notice the thing I put in a square was also that hydroxide. So I have zero point oh two moles of hydroxide. Since I have hydroxide left over, I have a basic solution. I should expect that this solution is basic at the end, which means at the end I should also have a high pH. Bases have pHs greater than seven. We are assuming we are at twenty-five degrees Celsius unless told otherwise. So we should have a high pH. It's a basic solution, a high pH. So I have that point oh one moles of hydroxide. It's up to you how you solve for this. Um, you can either use KW to solve for your proton concentration with hydroxide, or you can use PKW to solve, um, for pH plus POH. Either one will work. Um, I will, sure, I can demonstrate both of those. Uh, if we're doing KW, this is one times ten to the negative fourteenth because we are at twenty-five degrees Celsius is equal to the proton concentration that I'm looking for times my hydroxide concentration that we just said is point oh one molar. Which means that my proton concentration is one times ten to the negative thirteenth. I can then plug that into my pH equation. One times ten to the negative thirteen to get a pH of thirteen. So that's one option. The other option, which I will do in blue, uh, is my PKW is just fourteen. Then my POH in this case is the negative log of my hydroxide concentration, which is that zero point one. So this is fourteen is equal to the pH of one, pH plus one. So then by the time I subtract over, I get thirteen is equal to pH. So you should get the same answer no matter which way you do it because essentially you are actually doing the same math, just a different derivation. So. So now that we've solved that all the way through, I want to back up and take a look at what we did. Because this is, because the, the, the doing is one thing. The knowing what to do and why we did it is the real crux of titrations. So let's take a look back now at what we did and why. So we started with the problem. This had HCl. And Koh in it. This was a strong, strong titration. In a strong, strong titration. I'm only ever going to have three options. Ever. Because in a strong, strong titration, after I've solved in moles. The only thing that this bottom row can ever be. Is I can either have some hydroxide leftover, which is what we had. I could also have some H+ leftover instead. This is an either or situation. Or maybe these numbers were flipped and I actually had H+ leftover. That's option number two. Option number three is I would have neither leftover. But no matter what, out of any of those three, the next step is for me to solve for pH with what I have. The hydroxide, oddly enough, is the longest calculation out of a strong, strong titration. Because I had to calculate molarity. And since I wanted pH, but I had hydroxide, I had to deal with that some way somehow. So. To recap, once you've decided that you have a strong, strong. And you react in moles. You are either going to have. OH leftover. In which case. You. Solve for molarity. Of OH. Then. I'm going to go ahead and say then POH. In pH. Again, there were two different ways to do that. You can scroll back in the video if you, because this is going to be recorded. So if you're curious about the two different ways, those were both the way over here in black using KW or the way in blue using PKW. They had two options of how to get from hydroxide to pH. Two, you could have H+. Leftover. Then you would solve. For molarity. Which would get you your H+ concentration. Then pH. Or three, you have neither leftover. Which means you have just water. That means, by the way, you would be at the equivalence point. And your pH is equal to seven at 25 degrees Celsius. It's neutral. You have neither acid nor base leftover. The concentrations of hydroxide and hydrogenium would be equal. You're at seven at 25 degrees Celsius, which we are. So. That's a strong, strong titration. You only have three options. Out of a strong, strong titration. After you react in moles, either. You have. Hydroxide leftover. You have proton slash hydrogenium leftover. Or both of these are zero. You have neither leftover. Those are your only three options for a strong, strong titration. That's all you got. So. I understand that the person who asked, could I do all of the titrations quickly? I think the answer to can I do them all quickly is no. Because that took. 15 to 20 minutes to do. One, which was strong, strong. So, but we're going to keep going. I have been asked almost only questions about titrations. I also asked my class for questions on Friday and I pretty much got only titration questions. Not a surprise. So my other options are weak, strong. Similarly, what I'm going to go ahead and do is grab an example problem. Work the example problem and then we're going to backtrack and take a look at some of the options. There are going to be more options in a weak, strong titration. Because we're going to have to pay more attention to what's created. Well, let's go ahead and take a look at that. Definitely cheating. This was what I used for participation on Friday. This one. Big. Make a big so everyone can see it. There we go. Uh, what is the pH after 37.5 milliliters of a 0.12 molar standard solution of HCl has been added to 45 milliliters of a 0.2 molar solution? Of ammonia. The KB for ammonia is 1.8 times to the negative five. Ammonia. Hey, look, they gave us a KB for it. That means it's weak. They even gave us a KB for it. That means it's a weak base. Look at them help us out. HCl is one of the strong acids. You do need to have your strong acids memorized. Yes, you do. We are still going to react in moles. That is the first step, no matter what. React in moles, 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 moles. React in moles. Now's the part where I'm like, I know I already worked this problem out, but do I have those notes with me? No, they're at work. Excuse me, we have to do it from scratch, which is honestly fine. So there's my weak base plus my strong acid. This is going to react to form NH4 plus, plus CL minus. And again, I could go ahead and get rid of. My spectator ion and I could go ahead and do this as a net ionic reaction. It would look something like this. Do notice that because this is a weak titration. I'm going to have a conjugate species. So do notice that one of the things I am going to keep track of is I am going to keep track of my conjugate. Acid here. And this is going to be the main highlight that makes it different. From a strong, strong titration is a generation of another acid or base. So in a strong, strong, the only thing we could make was water. And so we're like, cool. I just worry about the reactants. I don't care about the rest. Now. We have to care about one of the products. So this caring about the product is a thing that makes a weak, strong titration different. Because I don't just get to ignore the products. I need to keep track of them. But we are in fact still going to react in moles. So I need to figure out what. 3, 37.5 milliliters of a point one two molar HCl solution is. That is. And. 45 milliliters. Another thing I do sometimes that might help you guys out is. Because there are so many numbers, I will sometimes underline this in different ways so I can keep track of which thing is which. And when I say different ways, like I know that I use a lot of different colors and I like different colors. But you could also underline like squiggly lines, wavy lines, double underlines. There's a whole bunch of different. Ways that you can just underline and still get that same idea across. 45 milliliters of point two molar solution gives me 0.009. And again, these are all in moles, zero. Moles. All in moles. I am going to subtract whatever the smallest number is. Something is going to go away. This is the smaller number, so I'm going to subtract. This number, point 0045 from both of my reactants and I'm going to add it. Again, this is the difference in a weak, strong. I need to add on to my product side. So again, in my week. That up, I also need to keep track of my product, not just my reactants. I have to keep track of both in a weak, strong. So now that we've done this, the question is. Now that I've reacted, what is left over? And essentially that's anything that's not zero. So there are two different numbers here that are not zero. They happen in this case to have the same number. But the two things I have that are not zero are NH3. And NH4 plus. Because I have both of those. Because I have both the weak base and its conjugate acid. I have both of those things. I have a buffer. And they are a comparable ratio between them. They're actually identical here, which makes my life a little easier than that. This is a buffer because I have both of them. This is a buffer. Which means I get to solve using Henderson-Hasselbach. Because I know I want to solve for pH, I am going to use this version of the Henderson-Hasselbach equation. The beautiful thing with Henderson-Hasselbach is these ratios can be in moles. Or. In molarity. As long as they match. They must match. Each other. What I mean by that is both of them have to be in moles or both of them have to be in molarity. So that base over the acids. We shall just write that because that's also what this is. This is the base. Over the acid. But again, they need to be the conjugates of each other, which is why we write it like that. As long as they're both in the same unit, they can be either one. So I'm going to use this formula. I need the PKA. I have the KB. So what I am going to go ahead and do. I don't know why I'm taking the time to do this. I have this number memorized. We'll just use the number I have memorized. So the KB, so what I am going to go ahead and do is I'm going to solve for the PKB. And again, yes, there are different ways to do this. No, I am not going to take the time to do other versions unless you ask me to, and then I will. But you can also do the 14 minus to switch between PKB and PKA. Subtraction would be great if I would. Hit the multiplication symbol. It says attraction symbol. Got something that was way out of range. There we go. 9.26. So here, what I need now is my pH. Is equal to 9.26 plus the log of leaving everything in moles because I can. 0.0045 divided by 0.0045. What you should find when you plug that into your calculator is this is the log of one. The log of one is zero. So what I actually have here is a special case where the pH is equal to the PKA. So in that case, it's just equal to that 9.26. The first of all, we solved for pH. Second of all. Because these two amounts are equal. Because my A minus is equal to my HA. This is the hack. Equivalence point. That's its definition. Your half equivalence point is where your pH is equal to your PKA in your titration. The half equivalence point. We'll get to the equivalence point in just a minute. So. To recap. Because we solved the problem, so I want to back up again. And show you where we made our decisions and how we made our decisions. So we started off. By identifying that we had a weak species. Because we had a weak species, we care about the product. So in this big problem, yes, those numbers are also important. Yes, we had to use those. But the thing that we really needed is because this problem involves a weak species, we have to, have to. Use the product. Because in that product, we actually generated a conjugate acid. And because we care about pH, that conjugate acid becomes important. So the very first thing that we did was recognize that we care about the product. Then we reacted everything in moles. Once we react everything in moles, we're asking ourselves, what is left over? The answer to this question is how we figure out how we solve from here. In this case, I had both some of my original weak species leftover. As well as some of my newly generated weak species. So because I have the weak species and its conjugate. This is a buffer. So I have both of those in relatively comparable amounts. Since I have both of those together, that means I get to have a buffer. So I get to use my Henderson-Hasselbach equation. Saves me having to write out an ice table. Saves me some time. So therefore. We used our buffer equation. Yes, there is a POH version of the buffer equation. I didn't use it. If you ask me in the chat, because you want to see the POH version, I'll do the POH version. If nobody asks me for the POH version. I will assume that everybody watching this live is like me and only wants the pH version. Honestly, I use the pH version because we ask for pH. And that way, when I'm finally done with this equation, I know I'm done. So to me, it's easier to just have one of them, but that's me. Maybe that's not you. And then I did go ahead and point out the fact that because pH is equal to PKA, we are in fact at the half equivalence point. That is just an extra because some people asked about half equivalence point. As far as what other ways you can solve for these problems, though. What we're going to need to do is consider where else we could have been in the titration. So if you consider that, I'm actually going to come up here. And I'm going to. Nab this part. And copy it. Bring it all the way down here. And paste it. Because now we're going to start to play a little what-if game. So. Going to erase, maybe. Erase, there we go. Oh, maybe I'm not erasing. Fine, because apparently I copied it over. It's now taking this as a picture. Where that's not what this used to do. Oh, Microsoft. Oh, oh, Microsoft. Great. Okay, so starting that over then. So I had NH3, I have H+, I am generating NH4 plus. Because of that, by the time that I am done. I, we originally already did one where I had both. Because I have both. I have both. That's a buffer. My other options include. Having. None of my reactants, but having some. NH4 plus. This is another one of my options. So here I have only. The conjugate species. If I have only the conjugate species, because all of my reactants got reacted away. This is what we refer to as the equivalence point. So the half equivalence point. I should have both of these things and I should have the same amount. In the equivalence point, I lost both of my reactants. They have both reacted away. Both of my original ammonia and my strong acid both reacted away. They're gone. The only thing I have left over is ammonia, the ammonium. The ammonium ion is the only thing I have left over. When you have only the conjugate species left over, that is when you are at the equivalence point. So this works both ways. You can both arrive at it because you calculated it out and now that's where we are. But you can also say, ta-da, you're at the equivalence point. Solve. And I think Alex did some of these. Because when you're at the equivalence point, you know that these two original things in the problem had to cancel each other. And we actually also knew that we started off. And we actually also knew that we started off. With uh, that zero point zero zero nine moles of NH3. That means that we had to have the same amount of our H+. Um, because you only have the conjugate species left over, because this is the only thing you have left over. Um, in this case, this is only NH4+. This is not a buffer. Because you only have one thing left over. This is only, if this is only NH4+, this is now a weak acid problem. Which means you are headed for an ice table. Which means you need molarity. Because molarity is in, ice tables are always in molarity. They're equilibrium. K-values involve molarity. So that's, so option one, you have both species. It's a buffer. Option two, you get rid of both of your reactants. You're at the equivalence point. You have only the conjugate species left over, whatever that is. In this case, it's a weak acid because we have only NH4+. Um, keep in mind. That there is the other version of this, this, so this is a weak base, makes a weak acid problem. If I had a weak acid over here, this would make a weak base, then I have to do different, slightly different math. I would still only have the conjugate species, though. Um. So only conjugate species, equivalence point, not a buffer. Um, my last option that I could possibly have, put that in blue. Um, is I could have my NH3 plus my weak, my strong acid makes. My weak acid. And what could actually happen here is I could still have, I could have none of my ammonia. But I could actually have some, I don't know how much, um, of my H+. And I would still have some of this left over. I, I don't actually know how much. We'll just go with point zero. I don't know how much we make. Uh, zero zero. Um. So I could have H+ and NH4+. This is another option I had. If this happens, then I'm actually going to treat this like it was a strong, strong titration. And I'm only going to care about the strong acid that's left over. Um, so this is my other option where I have a strong species left over. Um, and you basically solve for pH with strong only. I know that there are protons made from the conjugate species. They exist. They are there. There's not that many of them in comparison to the strong acid. So while you can add them in. You will be wasting your time. Because the number of protons that you're going to get off of that ammonium ion. Is so small that by the time you round to solve for pH. You won't actually see that make a change. So those are your options for a weak, strong titration. You now, again, I didn't, the one I didn't do, which I can do it real quick. Um, but there's really only three things that were here. Um, and this would have happened if I had a weak acid and a strong base making a weak base. I'd have the same idea. I could either have some of this. None of this and some of that, so then I have both the weak acid and its conjugate base. In this case, I have a buffer because I have both. My weak acid and its conjugate base. I could have. It set up to where I have my weak acids reacting with my hydroxide. And by the time I do all of my math, I react away both of my reactants. They're the only thing I have left over is my weak base. In this case, since I only have A minus, this is just a weak base problem. So you're going to use an ice table for this. With KB because it's a weak base. Last option is if I had a weak acid. Reacting with a strong base, it still forms that conjugate species. I could have something where I completely run out of my weak acid. I do have some amount of weak base left over. And I are, uh, strong base left over and I have weak base left over. In this situation, though, I'm going to calculate pH. With the strong species only. Because it's going to completely dominate the pH. And then this is a case where again, it's up to you if you do POH first. Um, or how you calculate that hydroxide. But you're only going to worry um, about solving for pH with the strong species if you have a strong species left over. So titration problems are all about looking at what do you have left over? After you react in moles. So no matter what, you're going to react in moles. That's what this little short not table, table thing was supposed to be. Is reacting in moles over and over and over again. And essentially. You only really have three options. Either you have both. Some of the weak species and its conjugate. Or maybe you reacted away all of the weak species and all the strong species and you only have conjugate left over. Or you reacted so far that you in fact have only. The uh, strong species because you added too much of it to the titration. And even though you made conjugate base, we don't care about it because the strong base will dominate the pH. What questions did I actually manage to answer? So here's what I think I answered. I don't know if you agree. I think I talked about the half equivalence point versus the equivalence point. I think I did that. Uh, you might disagree. You're welcome to disagree with me. Um, I think I did acids and bases. In my equivalence point, because I did as many titration options as I could think of. Um, I did not actually do any ice table problems. I cheated and I said, this is where you would use one. Um, so I'm going to put myself a little box right there because, um. I could definitely actually do an ice table problem, but I didn't. Um, and we talked about ice tables in relationship to titrations. I didn't talk about ice tables in relations to uh, chapter seventeen. And I didn't talk about ice tables in relationship to solubility. I don't actually think I finished ice tables. Um. Somebody mentioned memorization. Um, I'm just going to try to answer this one as I go along. Um. I know I mentioned memorizing strong acids and strong bases. Um. So thi- this, this is that moment of honesty. I definitely always respect when people ask me about memorizing things. Um. Here's the tricky part. Um. I am definitely that person that if you ask me to name all seven of Snow White's dwarves. I will confidently name five or six of them right now. And if you ask me to do it again in like forty-five minutes, I will again confidently name five or six of them. Still forgetting one or two of them, but I will have remembered new ones and forgotten other ones. And right now I'm struggling really hard with what on earth you guys need to memorize out of this unit. Ah, I'm going to think about it. But I'm going to tell you straight up that you should ask this question of me again later. Like tomorrow and the next day, and you should definitely ask your other instructors because. I'm going to have a real short list tonight because I can't think of anything that's super useful. Um. The other thing I think is useful to memorize is. Always soluble ions. Not necessarily all the solubility rules, but the always soluble ones I think are useful. Um, I'm going to pull those up real quick. Am I? Yes, I am. Um. So the things that I think are useful to memorize. It's ju- just the ones that don't have any exceptions over here. Um, and the main reason why I think that that's useful, oh no, don't do subtitles, don't subtitles, don't subtitles. Um. So it's because these are all alkali metal. Um, so lithium, sodium, potassium, rubidium, cesium, that these are always soluble. I actually think that that's useful. Um, same game, especially nitrate. We tend to use nitrate a lot is always soluble. Now the acetate's always soluble, kind of useful. Chloride, anion. Again, kind of useful. But the fact that these don't have any exceptions to me is what makes these valuable. Because that way, when you are looking at a solubility question. If you have something that involves sodium, you automatically know that it's soluble and you don't have to think about it. And you don't have to go looking for a KSP, you have to consider. So the ones that don't have any exceptions, I think have value to memorize. Um, but you might not agree, and I think is going to be different from instructor to instructor. I talked a lot. So. Let's see where we are on questions, even though I haven't answered all of them yet. What do we have so far for more questions?
Okay, so I'm not sure. Did you already answer the, um? Can you please go over how to find the exponents and coefficients when calculating KSP?
Uh, I have it written down. I haven't gotten to it yet, so thank you for the reminder.
Okay, sorry. Now I just, I lost my case. Um, can you explain the common ion effect and examples of rightward shifts with the common ion effect? Um, when do we use an ice table versus the BCA table for titrations? Um, can you solve question number twenty-six from S23 question paper? I tried, but the answer was not matching. And then can you go over titration, titration gra- graphs and that's it?
Okay. Um, so again, this is one that I'll likely do in the follow-up video. Uh, I will say though, if you're getting a number that doesn't match. If the number is the only thing that is remotely close is the correct answer. Odds are good, we had a small typo and as long as it was like in the same magnitude, we just left it. Um, so for example, if we're doing KSP problems. And the correct answer is like two point one times ten to the negative fifty-one. And we did a small typo and the thing that's on the page. Is one point two times to the negative fifty-one. But it's the only thing with to the negative fifty-one. And everything else is like ten to the negative twenty-three, ten to the positive five, ten to the negative four. Um, we probably left the typo and because it's the only thing that's remotely close. Um, so this does happen to us, by the way. Um, I wish it didn't. I wish that all of our exams were free of typos and that we never had that problem. Um, sometimes it's also a rounding error, sometimes on our part, sometimes on your part. Um. But, but do you take a look at that first? Uh, because if there, if the answer that you're getting is close. And the answer, and it's by far the only thing that is remotely close. Um, it's possible that we did have a typo, but when the instructors looked at it, we were like, I mean, what else were they going to choose? Um, so that, that does happen to us. Uh, so I will, I will say that, but I will take a look at that in, in the after video. Um. Okay, so ice table versus BCA. Um, so I should probably adopt BCA. Uh, in my language. I don't. Just like my class had to get used to me saying rice table and ice table because I learned rice for reaction. Um, BCA is supposed to stand for before. Change and after. Um, so I actually think I answered this question already. Because a BCA table is in moles. Which means that this is when things are reacting. Which means you're using a BCA table when you have a strong species. That's when you're using a BCA table, when you have a strong species, a strong acid or a strong base. Um. Strong acid or strong base. So that is when you are using a BCA table. A BCA table, by the way, is what we were using before when I said we are reacting in moles. I didn't call it a BCA table, but that's what that is. Because it's a way to keep track of what you start off with. How much you lose and what you have at the, have, you have after you've done your reaction. You're going to use that table anytime you have a strong species. An ice table, on the other hand, you're going to use, um, when you have a weak species. You have a weak acid. When you have a weak base. Or when you have a uh, solubility problem. You might not always need it. But for solubility, uh, especially solving molar solubility. Super useful for solving for molar solubility. So, there we go. I answered that question now. Ah. Since we're talking about titrations, let's go ahead and do titration graphs. And then we'll do KSP. Okie dokie. Titration graphs. So. Um. So freehanding titration graphs. Um. Here we go. Freehanding titration graphs. It's not so bad. Hmm, it could be better. I should really put the seven in after I draw. That's what I should do. Um. Let's think about this for a minute. Um, in a perfect world, it looks like this. Hmm. Seven. Well, it does not go down at the end. This is supposed to go all the way across like it's one, oh god, that's worse. Worse, not better. Uh. Okay, can do this. I can do this. Take a deep breath. Draw it again. That's closer. Um, seven. Okay, let's start with these two. So even though it's not perfect, we're going to pretend. That that is smack dab in the middle at seven. We are going to pretend that this is obviously smack dab in the middle, not at seven. Ta-da. This thing that I drew in red is supposed to be the equivalence point. It is the steepest part of the titration. What you might notice is on the graph on the left, it's at seven, or at least it's supposed to be. I know I freehanded the graph, but you can tell, you could should especially be able to tell the one on the right is not at seven. Um, whatever this is, it's higher than seven. In here, we should be able to identify where we are in the titration. In general, this is still a low pH, which means we still have H+. Over here, this is a high pH. Which means we have hydroxide. Where our equivalence point is at seven, this is a strong, strong titration here on the left. Because it starts at a low pH and goes to a high pH. That means that I start off with a strong acid in the beaker. And I titrate in a strong base in the buret. and I titrate in a strong base in the buret because whatever is in the buret is the thing that I'm adding over time. So this x-axis, even though the x-axis is not technically time, the x-axis is the amount of the titrant added. Yes, I will write that down. Amount of titrant added. Over here on my y-axis is pH. Because in theory, you're adding the amount of titrant little bit by a little bit and you add more over time. We sometimes talk about this x-axis as if it is time. So that's why you wind up with categories like before the equivalence point, the equivalence point and after equivalence point. Because even though we usually think about before and after as being with respect to time, you're thinking about you, did you, have you added enough titrant yet to get to the equivalence point? Because you're gonna always add, we're not gonna subtract titrant in this regard. So because it's at a pH, because the equivalence point is at seven, this is a strong, strong titration, because it starts low and goes high, we usually, for us, is a strong acid titration in the thing in the beaker, the base in the buret. Which means this other one over here, we've noticed we still have a low pH at the beginning, less than seven. And we're going to a high pH at the end. My equivalence point is higher than seven, so my equivalence point being not at seven tells me that this is weak, strong. So equivalence point not at seven tells me that this is weak, strong. And then the fact that I start with a low pH and I ended a high pH tells me that this is a weak acid strong base. Just gonna write the word acid so I can get all the letters in there. So equivalence point not at seven, weak, strong, low pH to high pH, weak acid, strong base. You should also note that my equivalence point here is higher than seven. That's what it should be, because remember, we talked about the fact that if I'm at my equivalence point, that would mean that I've gotten rid of all of my weak acids and all of my strong base and the only thing that's left is A minus. The only thing that's left over is a weak base at the equivalence point. It's the only thing that's left in a weak acid, strong base titration is my conjugate species. Because the only thing left over is a weak base, it's basic. Bases are higher than seven. So this is that time where you do kind of have to walk through, um, what, what all of those things mean. Equivalent points means, um, only conjugate left over. When only my conjugate species is left over for a weak acid, strong base titration, that conjugate species is a weak base. So since my weak base is left over, my equivalence point should be higher than seven. In this set, again, we could still have that half equivalence point. I didn't draw it super well, but basically if my equivalence point and the amount of titrant added here is, let's say, this is just 20 milliliters, my half equivalence point should be half of whatever that is. Um, so my half equivalence point should in fact be at half of the equivalence point. I know I keep saying the same words over and over. Um. And this again is my half equivalence point is where my pH is equal to PKA. So my graph is really crappy for actually figuring out what that is, but this is where sometimes we could either give you a table of data or we could locate multiple points on the graph where you could actually derive that pH, where, where the pH is actually equal to the PKA. Um, keep in mind, this is the kind of thing that either, again, a table works well for, um, so that we could just give you those values or it also works well in a multiple choice format where, again, I know my axis here is really crappy, um, but if I asked you for the PKA of this acid, giving you only this information, um, we'll go ahead and go with like 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. There, now I have an axis. Um, if I wanted to ask you, what's the PKA of the acid, I could give you options that look like this. Uh, I could ask you if the PKA was 2. Um, or 4. Or hmm. 5.8, um, or 7. Or, uh, whatever the heck that's gonna look like, 10. So I could do a multiple choice question where I asked you, what is the PKA of the weak acid? I can absolutely do that. And this works beautifully as a multiple choice question based on a graph because 2 is way down here, like I didn't, I'm not even on the curve at that point. Um, 4 is over here, that's probably like my initial pH. Um, 5.8, I mean, you could argue with me that the half equivalence point is actually at 6. So you can argue with me if that's supposed to be 5.8, if it's supposed to be 6. But regardless, 6 isn't on the list, is it? Um, 7 is, 7's a big nope, though. Um, I'm not at 7 and 7's pretty special when it comes to pHs. Uh, so 7 is also a nope, 7's somewhere over there. Uh, 10, it's not on the list here, but I was trying to make that be the equivalence point. Um, and so while you can argue with me that the PKA should really be 6 in a multiple choice question, you don't have that option. Uh, you just have the closest option, which is 5.8. So another thing we can do. Ah, do, 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 do. I only did two graphs. There are four. Um, okay. I'm gonna put the thing afterwards. Hmm, 7. Where is it? Have to think about this. Or 7? Eh, move it up a little bit. 7, great. Um, so a couple of things about these. Uh, you might notice that they both start high. Um. So this is a, so these are both bases in the basis, base in the beaker. They, they both start high. Uh, and again, we're actually gonna base these off of the equivalence point. So here's, here's my equivalence point and there's 7. And here's my equivalence point and there's less than 7. Ta-da. Um, so on the left, the thing that starts high and is at 7, this should be my strong base in the beaker, my strong acid in the buret. And the thing here on the left, I've got a, um, equivalence point less than 7. So this should be my weak species, this time my weak base with a strong acid. Because I'm ending at a low pH in both cases. Um, notice again, I've got an equivalence point. But here, my equivalence point is less than 7. Um, and that should make sense because at the equivalence point, when I have whatever that base is plus hydroxide making that conjugate acid, at the equivalence point, I would have only weak acid. So since at the equivalence point, I would have only weak acid, that means that my pH should be less than 7. Because I'm saying that at the equivalence point, I get rid of all of my weak base, I get rid of all of my strong acid, I have weak acid left over. That weak acid is still acidic, so my equivalence point should be less than 7. My buffer range still exists. So that range where I could potentially have a buffer is still there and somewhere in that zone is my half equivalence point again. So if this time I pretend that my equivalence point is at 30 milliliters, we will say that my half equivalence point is at 15 milliliters halfway. Half equivalence point halfway. Uh, and we still have a pH at the equivalence, at the half equivalence point, my pH is still equal to my PKA. Or graphs. I can have base to acid, strong, strong, base to acid, weak, strong. I scribbled over this a lot, acid to base, weak, strong, acid to base, strong, strong. Four options for graphs, four, before I tell you four. Focusing hard on the equivalence point. Hey, where'd my questions go? Over here somewhere. Okay, titration graph. Okay, I think I answered ice table versus a BCA table. Because I gave options of where those things might be, uh, which means I have not done predicting products and I haven't done exponents and coefficients in KSP. Okay, so let's start at the beginning of KSP. So. Sorry, I'm trying to think of something where I'm gonna use exponents. Um, let's not overthink this, let's just do, let's do aluminum hydroxide. I kind of like aluminum hydroxide, actually, for kicks and giggles. Um, so if I do aluminum hydroxide, that's a solid and it's gonna be an equilibrium with the aluminum ion. And I make three, look at that number 3 down there, 3 hydroxide, also aqueous. Uh, solids are not involved in K expressions. So if I'm starting off, I have none of these, I get x plus x of this, plus 3x of this, x, 3x. So where is my coefficient, coefficient, my coefficient is in my uh, reaction, it's also in my table. There's where my coefficients go. If I'm doing a KSP expression, so my KSP expression doesn't use coefficients, never has, not starting now, not new. I'm gonna box it. That'll make it look different, too. Box it. Um. This is an exponent. So in your K, so your K expressions will use exponents. Your K expressions use the coefficients as exponents. Your K expressions only get exponents. Your coefficients belong in your ice table. Your exponents belong in your K expressions or your Q expressions, either one, both. Because your K expression and your Q expression are the same, just the value is different. So coefficients in the table and the reaction. Exponents in the actual expression of KSP. So a lot of times when we are doing KSP expressions, um, oh, I meant to actually grab some information about this so we could actually do one of these. Um, I don't know why I'm looking around because I don't have the textbook near me. Um, I'm gonna do the terrible thing and Google real quick so that I can use a real value. It's really small. Um, oh, it's from this morning. Um, oh, look, I really like aluminum hydroxide. There we go, it's really small, uh, 1.9 into the negative 3, that sounds good. Um. So my KSP expression, ah, so we are going to pretend that this question actually asked, what is the, I'm gonna make this big in just a minute, what's the molar solubility of aluminum, I'm just gonna write this out. Aluminum hydroxide. KSP equals 1.9 times 10 to the negative 33. Making this large, so it's actually legible. And I will go back in and add my superscript because one of my other classes, I actually do grades, um, science papers written by undergraduates and it is becoming a pet peeve of people not using superscript and subscripts when I know that you guys have subscriptions through the university for Microsoft Word, I know you have that option. It's also in, um, uh, what should I call it? Um. Google Docs, Google Docs will also do subscripts and superscripts. It's just lazy. Not acceptable. Um, all right, so what, it, it's okay in email, though. If you, if you email me and you don't have subscripts and superscripts, that's totally fine. I, I accept it if it's not done in Outlook because that, it's really annoying in Outlook. Anyway, uh, what's the molar solubility of aluminum hydroxide? There's your KSP value. So what we're gonna do then is go ahead and solve for molar solubility. We have information in our ice table, we have a KSP expression. So I'm gonna use that KSP, 1.9 times to the negative 33. 1.9 times 10 to the negative 33. Yes, I did just use Google, I'm sorry. I meant to grab values from the textbook, but I forgot my textbook. Um. So notice, I do have a coefficient in there, but I have the coefficient because I am just putting whatever my values are into my expression. So I do have my coefficient in there, but I have the coefficient in there because it's what was in the table, taking things from the table and plugging them in. And that's the only reason why the coefficients show up in there. This is 1.99 times to the negative 33 is equal to x times, this is 27 x cubed. I'm gonna double check that real quick because it's been that kind of a day. 3 to the third power or 3 cubed is in fact 27. Yay, I haven't forgotten that. Good. I have made enough other mistakes today that I'm trying hard to not to make more. Um, so this is 1.9 times 10 to the negative 33 is equal to 27x to the fourth. The way I got that, by the way, is that 3 is 3 cubed and x cubed. That exponent does apply to both of those things, not just one of them. Um, so now I'm gonna take 1.9 times to the negative 33, I'm gonna divide by 27 to get rid of that, so then I get 7.0 times 10 to the negative 35 is equal to x to the fourth. You get to do your cube root, fourth qua- quatern root? Quaternary, whatever, fourth root, however you want to. Um, personally, I prefer to do fractional exponents, so I will just be raising everything to the 1/4th power or yes, raising everything to the point 2/5 power. It works great for me. You do it however you want to, I don't care. If you can figure out in your calculator how to make this a fourth root, you are more than welcome to do so. I, um, I always forget how, uh, that's not entirely true. Um. This is faster for me, that is true. Um. I don't forget how, I just forget if the 4 goes first and then the button or if the button goes first and then the 4. Um, and then by the time that I remember, I usually have lost this 7 times to the negative This seven times to the negative thirty-five. And yes, I am a person that doesn't write down enough things. So this makes my life easier. So I do use fractional. Exponents instead of fourth roots. You do it however you want to. This is the part where you get to know you and your calculator better than I do. Um. Also, I do not get to tell you how to do that on an exam. So you need to figure out how to do that on your calculator before the exam starts. Uh, so X is going to be our molar solubility, because our molar solubility. Is just going to relate essentially in a one-to-one ratio with whatever our whole salt is. But that's what I'm looking for when I'm doing molar solubility. Uh, now, one of the questions that was asked was. What do we do about the common ion effect? Um, so because I already have this problem set up. Um, let's go ahead and do both a conceptual demonstration of common ion. But we'll also go ahead and do a, um. Calculation. Of common ion. Just because we can. Um. So really, all I'm going to use is I'm going to use this KSP value. That's what I'm keeping, and so I'm also going to keep aluminum hydroxide. But what I'm going to ask. Is two different things. One, I'm going to ask for the molar solubility of aluminum hydroxide. I'm going to make this as mean as I possibly can. Um, at a pH of thirteen. Um. And I'll just also ask, um, does the. Solubility. Increase or decrease? As the pH increases. So first of all, I'm actually going to answer the second question first. Um, this one, does the solubility increase or decrease as the pH increases? So first of all, it's nice to remember that if the pH is increasing. That means that it should be more basic. Um, or more base, more, more basic. Um. More basic means more hydroxide. Because I have aluminum hydroxide, because I already decided. That what I have in solution. Is hydroxide. If I'm just going to add more of the product. Adding more product is going to shift to the, back to reactant. More product is going to shift back to reactants. I didn't put my state symbols in here, but this is a solid. These are aqueous. So shifting to something that has more product. So giving it more product is going to shift back towards something that is the solid. Which is less soluble. What I can then do, if I did actually want to go ahead and talk about. The molar solubility, is now, again, we still aren't going to use the solid. But, and I still don't have any aluminum, but now, because I have a pH of thirteen. I actually could solve for hydroxide. Um, a pH of thirteen means that I have a. Um, P O H of one. Which means I can take ten, uh, to the negative one is equal to my hydroxide concentration. Which is point zero one. Yes, I did do that on purpose to make my math easy. So now I actually have a concentration of hydroxide at the beginning. I'm still going to add X. I'm still going to add three X here. So this is now X. This is zero point one plus three X. When I go to plug this in to KSP. I have X, and then I have zero point one plus three X cubed. I am still going to assume that the X's small approximation works. This is a little bit hand wavy at this point. But frankly. This is cubic. We're going to use it. Um. And that ten to the negative thirty-three is really small. Also, using. Any, using the, uh, four hundred times Ka rule at this point. Is a little bit tricky, because part of that rule is dependent on. Your, uh, exponents. Um, and these are different exponents. Uh, so we're just going to assume for KSP that the values are small enough, that my X's small approximation works. I know it's hand wavy. Just said that. Um. So I then get X times zero point one. Cubed, this cubes, uh, that's right. Cubed. I wanted to erase it. I have said the negative thirty-three. Point one. Cubed. Uh, and then one point nine EE negative thirty-three divided by. Um. Point one cubes. So I just get X. Could be equal to one point nine times ten to the negative. Thirty. Ta-da. The still molar solubility. Molar. Um, and you should see, so we already, no, please, Microsoft Teams, please, 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 don't do this. Um. It's not Teams, it's, uh, OneNote. Um, so we should be able to see, actually, it means to my advantage. Fine. Um. So you should be able to see is my new molar solubility when we start off with a low pH. Um, oh, there it goes. It did change. Um. So we suggested that it would be less soluble. Um, before, when we were not doing any sort of base in solution, I had ten to the negative nine. With a base in solution, I have ten to the negative thirty. So my solubility did in fact go down. So conversely. Uh, you can look at things increasing in solubility. Things increasing in solubility are things that would drag this equilibrium to the right. Dragging this to the right mostly is going to be things that react with hydroxide. Um, so essentially here, if my, um. My pH increased, my solubility went down. That does mean that if my pH decreased, my solubility would go up. That's because the more protons I add to this, the protons are going to remove. Hydroxide. Because my protons are going to react with hydroxide to form water. And that essentially removes them out of the products. Anytime you can remove a product, that drags your equilibrium to the right. Which in this case, to the right means more aqueous species, which means more soluble. Where are we on questions? Um, first, I'm going to check my list. I don't want any new ones quite yet. I will ask for new ones in just a moment, though. I didn't predict products yet. Um, okay. Need to predict products. So I think I did exponents. Um, I did an ice table solubility. I did that. Um, I did common ion effects with a right shift, an example. Um. I don't think you guys need any more examples than that. Um. So I have not predicted the products yet. Um. So let me go ahead and do one of those real quick, where we would predict products. Um, so predicting products. Um, would look something like this. Um. Usually, there's a lot more information in here. Uh, so we'll just, yeah. Fifty-milliliter solution of sodium phosphate. Let's make this, I'm going to add in the subscripts in a minute. Uh, sodium phosphate is added. Uh. A zero point one molar fifty-milliliter solution of sodium phosphate is added to. A seventy-five-milliliter solution of zero point two molar. Hmm. Sorry. Uh, silver. Um. Nitrate. Because I don't know what else doesn't make that precipitate automatically. Um. Uh, what is QSP? We'll ask that question. I didn't even say for what species. That's because we're going to figure it out. Um, okay, adding in some subscripts. Right there, subscripts. There. Subscripts. And right there, I could add it, add it for QSP. I'm not going to. Um, so if the question is, what sort of products can we predict? So we haven't done this since Jin Kim one, so first of all, if you're looking for more practice with predicting products, that is back in chapter nine. Um. But basically, what's happening here is I've got sodium phosphate. And I've got silver nitrate. And I want to know what products I might possibly make out of this. The first thing we actually have to do is break this down to what we really have. This is sodium. Phosphate. And silver. Nitrate. We are going to swap cations, essentially. So I'm going to take my still, my sodium and my silver. And I'm now going to put my sodium with the nitrates. And I'm going to put my silver with the phosphate. So as I do that. I'm going to get new things. So I'm going to get sodium nitrate. Notice they're both one, positive one for sodium, negative one for nitrate. And I'm going to get silver phosphate. This is the time where when I first mentioned solubility and memorization, I said, I personally think it's helpful. If you know that all your alkali metals are always soluble. So that way you just know that sodium is always soluble. This is what I meant. Because you make two different products out of this thing. Um, the sodium nitrate and the silver phosphate. And it can just make your life a little easier. If you look at that sodium nitrate and you're like, this thing is aqueous. That sodium, my friend, always soluble. I don't care about this. If I'm looking for a precipitate, or I want to talk about solubility. I don't care, because it's always soluble. That's still, that sodium. That N A, always soluble, so I don't care about the rest of it. Uh, which means I can just focus on this thing. And either go check it out in a table, or more than likely, there's a little. KSP for silver phosphate, uh, somewhere on the page. Um, whether that's at the, um, table in the back. Um, the, uh, potentially useful information, or whether that is. Um. In the problem, I don't know. Um. Let's go ahead and Google it, because I was not prepared for this one either. Um. Silver phosphate, yeah, 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 give me that. What is it? It's got to be crappy. It can't be good. It must be wacky. Um, come on, it's got to be, no. Is it really that high? Ah! I'm so displeased. Um. One point eight times to the negative five moles per liter. I don't buy that. Oh, I do not buy that. I am displeased. Those are really high. Sorry, I don't like, well, actually, I'm doing it for comparison's sake, so for comparison's sake, then I don't really care. Okay, I really wish I had grabbed your textbook from my office. Um. This, we're going to pretend that this is the KSP value for silver phosphate. I don't trust it. But we're going to pretend that that's it. Um. So what we are going to go ahead and do is finish the problem, I said. Um, oh. Zero point one molar, uh, fifty-milliliter solutions added to seventy-five-milliliter solution, point two molar silver nitrate. What's the QSP? And does anything precipitate? Does a precipitate form? We're going to ask this question and answer it. Um, even though I'm walking about KSP values, it's fine. Um. So one of the things we're going to have to do. For, so we did figure out what might potentially precipitate, so we're going to ignore sodium nitrate. We're going to focus on silver phosphate. We know sodium nitrate is always soluble, because we went ahead and decided that we were going to memorize that all of our alkali metals are always soluble. So we don't care about that. We just care about silver phosphate. We found its KSP value. And the potentially useful information, we will just assume that it is that value. For the sake of this exam review that ends in fifteen minutes. Um. So what's my KSP, my QSP value? Um, so QSP is going to be based on, um, that same idea. As KSP, we just don't know what the value of QSP is. So QSP is going to have the same expression. Um, the concentration of silver times the concentration of phosphate cubed. Uh, ah, cube's on the wrong thing. This is the reason why. So. There is part of me that's like, you should always go ahead and write out the reaction. And honestly, this is the reason why. Uh, is because I sometimes make the mistake of thinking about the charge and putting the exponent in the wrong place. There are three silvers, which is why the thing that is cubed is the silver. Over here. So I need the concentration of silver. And I need the concentration of phosphate. Those are the two things I need. I'm just going to plug them in, because my QSP expression. Just wants to know what's the concentration of silver and what's the concentration of phosphate, phosphate? And then we multiply them together. So. Since I want the concentration of phosphate. Is going to be in sodium phosphate. Um, so I'm going to take my zero point one molar and multiply it times zero point oh five liters. To get moles. Now I'm doing this for a reason. Because. What you might notice is I'm adding these two together. Uh, so I wind up with. Zero point one two five liters. So I need to make sure that I recalculate my concentrations, essentially. Uh, I can't just take them at face value. So this is zero point oh four molar. So that's for my phosphate. Let's come to it senses. Um. And then seventy-five milliliters of a point two molar silver nitrate solution. Again, I want my silver. So I'm going to take that point zero seven five liters times zero point two molar. And gets me zero point one. Zero point zero one five. Divided by my new concentration, my new volume, zero point one two five. Which gets me zero point one two for my silver, and that's cute. So one of the other things, uh, so I was going to use my calculator. Uh. So by the time everything is said and done, I get a QSP value of six point nine times ten to the negative five. Um. Thanks to Mike, oh, no, I just put it over here. Um, my KSP value is one point eight times to the negative five. My QSP value is greater than my KSP value. Because QSP is greater than KSP. That means I essentially have too many products. So I'm going to expect my equilibrium to shift to the left. My shifting to the left in this case means, there we go. Um. My shifting to the left in this case means that I'm going to make more of this solid. Because I'm going to make more of this solid, a precipitate does form. So since my QSP is greater than my KSP. Uh, I'm going to, again. I'm going to, again, we can still think about this as a shift left and therefore a precipitate forms. You can still do QSP and KSP. Shift left, precipitate forms, because to the left is where that solid is. I did have to recalculate my malarities because this gave me volumes. And because I had volumes, I did have to add those together for a final volume in there. Now, one of the other things, so for those of you who can't tell, I am starting to misspeak a little bit, and I'm starting to get some of my calculations a little bit wonky. Whenever I give y'all the advice on an exam that you should do the things that you like first, this is part of that advice. Usually you are fresher and more efficient first. And as time goes on, you get a little bit more tired, it's more easy to make mistakes. So sometimes I give the recommendation to do the more difficult things first, but honestly, I personally am of the opinion at this point in my life that you should go ahead and do the problems that you think are more straightforward. And basically just trust that early fresh version of yourself and don't go back and recheck the work from the stuff that you did early on, if that's the fresh version of you. Sometimes you'll realize that the fresh version of you panicked and made a mistake. But for, but usually, when you are fresh at the beginning of the exam is when you are more likely to get things right. As the exam goes on and the more chemistry you do, the more likely you are to make mistakes because the more tired you become. Okay, um, other questions out of the chat? Even though I don't know that I'll have time to answer them, but I'll try. What else do we have out of the chat?
I don't see anymore, I think that was all.
Okay, cool. Where was I? Did I actually answer all the things? So in the seven minutes I have left, great, you can tell my, 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 uh, my, my OneNote's messing up a little bit. Let me actually do a chapter seventeen ice table question. I'm going to shut OneNote for just a minute and bring it back, though. And hope that that gets, fixes my issue. So just, just because I haven't actually done an ice table, well, I did an ice table solubility. I did, I did finally do a ice table problem. But let's actually go ahead and for kicks and giggles, since I did bring up, we're just going to do what is the pH of a zero point one molar ammonium chloride solution? And then what it's going to give you is KB of NH three is one point eight times ten to the negative five. This, by the way, is the reason, so that that is the KB of ammon, of ammonia. You might notice it was also the KSP of silver phosphate, which is part of the reason why I was like, hmm, that is it? Because this number just shows up way too often. Anyway, we don't care. We're going to go ahead and solve this pH problem real quick. So here is my ammonium chloride. I'm going to think about this as having the ammonium ion and the chloride ion. I'm going to only care about the ammonium ion because the chloride ion is neutral. It's not going to affect the pH. When I go ahead and do pH, though, I'm going to care about the pH of this guy. This is going to make ammonia and is going to make proton concentration. One thing to make sure that we are doing is when I have H plus, I need a K A value. So if that is H plus, then I need K A. That's not what I have, I have KB. So even though I can go ahead and think through this, zero point one, zero, zero, negative X, plus X, plus X, zero point one minus X, X, X. The thing to remember is if I'm making protons, I need K A. Now, I will say that before spring break, I was trying to emphasize that we don't actually have to do this ice table out. Because in acids and bases, you're always just going to get this X squared divided by zero point one minus X. We can also go ahead and do that four hundred times our K A value. We don't have a K A value yet, I need to fix that. KW is equal to K A times KB. One times ten to the negative fourteenth is equal to K A times one point eight times ten to the negative five. So therefore, I can go ahead and solve for K A. I get, oh, come on, Microsoft. So my K A is going to equal five point five six times ten to the negative ten. So we are going to use that as my K A value. So I can go ahead and multiply that times four hundred. When I do that times four hundred, I get two point two times ten to the negative seven, which is less than my initial concentration. And that's really all I need that to be, is less than my initial concentration. That was a trick to let me know if I could use the X's small approximation that we used a bit earlier. So I am going to assume that this is zero, which means I can just solve this as five point five six times ten to the negative ten is equal to X squared divided by zero point one. By the time I then go ahead and do the rest of my math, this does simplify and I get a value of X to be seven point four six times ten to the negative six. Whenever we have this, especially in ice table problems, it is good to go ahead and make sure that we were making things match appropriately. So we already said, since I'm making protons, I need K A. So once I've solved for X, it's always nice to go back and double check that I do in fact have the thing that I thought I had. So I think I'm solving for H plus here. So since this is supposed to be equal to H plus, when I'm then going to solve for pH, I do have the thing that I need. So that's the other thing I do like to make sure that I've done, is that I did actually solve for the thing that I can just go ahead and plug into my pH equation. Because otherwise I have the whole P O H situation, which I can still deal with. But it's good to make sure that I know which one I actually have. Each is five point one. So again, whenever we're doing an ice table problem back from acids and bases, a couple of things to keep straight is if you're producing protons, you need K A. Which yes, does mean if you are producing hydroxide, then you need KB. So I know I've got that hanging out. So if I had something like, I actually had ammonia plus water going to my NH four plus plus hydroxide. If I had hydroxide, there we go. If I had hydroxide, then I need KB. So if hydroxide, then KB. Keep in mind then, that if I had solved for X, my X would have been equal to hydroxide concentration. If I was using KB and if I was making hydroxide. So that would not just plug into my pH equation, right? That would plug into a P O H equation. So that's just something to watch out for when you're doing your ice tables, is keeping in mind, did I make hydroxide? Did I make hydronium or protons? So am I using K A, am I using KB? You do have to use the right constant in your ice table. And then make sure that then you're solving for the correct item at the end. The other thing you can always do is since for this problem, we decided that this ammonium ion is an acid. We should have gotten an acidic pH, and we did, we got a pH less than seven. So you can also at various times, look at what you have and ask yourself, do I expect to have an acid or a base in solution? And double check your final answer, do I have an acid or a base in solution? Were there any other questions out of the chat? Either you're muted or you're gone, I don't know which one.
No, there are no other questions.
No other questions? Okay, great, fabulous. Okay, so I will make a follow-up video. It's just going to have number twenty-six from the spring twenty-three exam on it. Because I did do an ice table problem. But I unsurprisingly did not have time to go back and do a, the problem out of the end of chapter problems. So I will have a follow-up video, it'll have two problems on it. And that will wrap everything up. So it is six oh two PM on Monday night, so we are done, everybody. All done.